The Columbus City Council meeting for August 3rd, 2020 will now come to order. In compliance with the Open Meeting Act, Nebraska revised statute 84-1407, a current copy of the act is posted in this meeting room. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Bulkeley.
Here.
Augustine Schulte.
Here.
Barr.
Here.
Heimer.
Here.
Jablonsky.
Here.
Creshaw.
Here.
Lor.
Here.
Roth.
Here.
Schilling.
Here.
Mayor Bulkeley, the roll has been called.
Thank you. Mr. Council President.
Other, thank you for the opportunity to serve our fellow citizens. Please give us your wisdom and guidance to make the proper decisions entrusted to this governmental body. May our conduct show respect, honor, and courtesy to each other as well as to all our citizens. Amen.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare the bombs bursting in air gave proof through the night that her flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the hoop of the brave? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. I welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. If at any time during the meeting, anyone would like to come forward and address the council, we'd ask that you do so. You give your name and address, and you limit your comments to five minutes or less. I'd also remind you that we are honoring social distancing. We have the room spaced the way we're comfortable. If after your item on the agenda is done, you're welcome to just up and leave. We understand. So with that, we'll move forward. Tara.
Consent Agenda Item 4. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the city council member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from consent status and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item 4A, minutes of the July 20th, 2020 city council meeting. Item 4B, Civil Service Commission minutes from July 30th, 2020, certifying additional police officer candidates, Beau Dittmer and Brittany White. Item 4C, change date of the first meeting in September of 2020 to 7:00 PM Tuesday, September 8th, due to the Labor Day holiday. Item 4D, Resolution Number R20-75, authorizing payment of various improvement projects. And Item 4E, payroll and bills on file. Mr. Mayor and council, is there anything you would like removed from consent status?
Mr. Mayor, I move the items on the consent agenda being routine in nature be approved as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Bring us up to public hearings.
Item 7A, Public Hearing, application of La Bamba Mexican Restaurant for Retail Class C Liquor License at 3015 23rd Street.
Is there anyone here to speak against this public hearing? Is there anyone here to speak for this public hearing? I know-
Mayor, I move the hearing be closed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 7A1, Application of La Bamba Mexican Restaurant for Caesar Montenegro as a manager in conjunction with the liquor license.
Mr. Mayor, I move the application of La Bamba Mexican Restaurant for Caesar Montenegro as manager in conjunction with their liquor license be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Mr. Montenegro, thank you and good luck with your restaurant.
Item 7B, Public Hearing, consideration, consider authorization of acquisition of real estate in the Wilken Acres addition to be used for road right-of-way.
Anyone here to speak against this public hearing? Anyone to speak for this public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 7B1, Resolution Number R20-76, authorizing acquisition of real estate in Wilken Acres addition for road right-of-way purposes.
Anyone?
Lor.
It doesn't say that on here, but I would move for the adoption of Resolution Number- on my notes, it says R20-77, and it's not. It's R20-76.
There's two as well.
You're off one. Scroll down one.
Go up one more.
No, I'm not off one. Oh, I am off one. I apologize. Mr. Mayor, I would move for the adoption of Resolution Number R20-76.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second to adopt. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 7B2, Resolution Number R20-77, approving the purchase agreement with Rodney W. and Patricia A. Muller in the amount of $7,500 for a portion of land in the area of 47th Avenue and Howard Boulevard to be used for road right-of-way purposes.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of Resolution Number R20-77.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Many years to find this out, huh?
It's been used as a road for a long time.
Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to reports of council committees.
Item 10A, Committee of the Whole from August 3rd, 2020. Item 10A1, 1% Restricted Funds Authority Increase. The Committee of the Whole recommends to the mayor and city council that the restricted funds authority be increased by an additional 1% for fiscal year 2020, 2021.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the report be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this committee report. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 10A2, Fee Schedule. The Committee of the Whole recommends to the mayor and city council that the fee schedule, or schedule of fees for fiscal year 2020, 2021 be approved as presented.
Mr. Mayor, I move this report be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this committee report. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 10A3, The Pay Plan. The Committee of the Whole recommends to the mayor and city council that the pay plan for fiscal year 2020, 2021 be approved as presented.
Mr. Mayor, I recommend the report be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this committee report. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Before I slam my gavel, I'd just like to say congratulations to staff for putting together- this is a major part of the budget process and moving this through tonight. We had a committee of the whole for an hour before to review, which was a summary of the reviews we've already had up to the date. So this is the major part of the budget that then will be presented to us in near time.
Yes.
Near time. All right, motion passes. Brings us up to new business.
Item 13A, Application of the Fraternal Order of Eagles for addition to the liquor license for outdoor area at 3205 12th Street.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the application of Fraternal Order of Eagles for an addition to liquor license for outdoor area be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the addition of the liquor license for the Fraternal Order of Eagles. If anyone is wondering, I got a call asking if he needed to be here, anyone from the Eagles needed to be here. I said this is a pretty straightforward request. Many other entities have liquor licenses, and I said I didn't see a need. So, I mean, sometimes people get a little upset, well, nobody was here to represent it. He had asked, and so, anyway, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13B, Application of the Friedhof Room at Schwayzer's for special designated liquor license on August 29th, 2020 for street dance in front of 1270 27th Avenue.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the application of the Friedhof Room at Schwayzer's for special designated liquor license for August 29th, 2020 be approved, conditioned upon the direct health measures allowing street dances prior to August 17th, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion?
What is the governor's mandate at this time?
They wouldn't be allowed because of the number of people. So, you know, it's all dependent on the DHMs at the time. So, we hope we'll keep our fingers crossed that at that point, things have gotten improved. All right, with that, and all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13C, Quote from Downey Drilling in the amount of $18,439.95 for repairs to well number one located at 10th Street and 28th Avenue.
Mr. Mayor, I move the quote from Downey Drilling for repairs to well number one be accepted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the quote to Downey Drilling. Any questions? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13D, Quote from Downey Drilling in the amount of $21,130 for repairs to well number 19 located in the North Well Field.
Mr. Mayor, I move the quote from Downey Drilling for repairs to well number 19 be accepted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the quote from Downey Drilling in the amount of $21,130 for repairs to well number 19. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13E, Quote from Mike's Auto Sales and Service in the amount of $12,995 for administrative vehicle for the police department.
Mr. Mayor, I move the quote from Mike's Auto Sales and Service for a vehicle be accepted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the quote from Mike's Auto Sales for a police department vehicle. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13F, Design and Construction of a Parking Lot at Glor Park.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the design and construction of a parking lot at Glor Park be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the design and construction of the parking lot at Glor Park. I think in the notes, it mentioned that the no parking had been put up on the adjacent street. The need with the splash pad and other activities taking place in the park made this parking lot something that was necessary.
Right.
I think it's a great addition to Glor Park.
Yes, and we do have money in our current CIP to fit this in, and yes, we think it's necessary.
Any, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes. I'm wondering whether the parking lot as proposed is big enough. As I remember, it's what, a seven-stall parking lot? Nine-stall parking lot?
Nine stalls.
And I'm wondering whether that's big enough for the splash pad and the shelter and keeping people off the street and providing a safe parking area. I'm wondering if it should be a little bit larger, 11 or 13?
Well, the intent wasn't to totally take parking off the adjacent streets. It was to alleviate it a little bit. And really, we haven't had any complaints about the parking at Glor Parks until the splash pad was added. And this is in close proximity to the splash pad. I think parents with little ones want to be fairly close there. And I have taken my youngest there a number of times, and there's never more than, you know, eight to 12 cars there at any time. So I think the combination of the no parking on the adjacent street in that zone that's not very safe, and these nine stalls will be plenty. And the bigger we get, the more expensive it is. And we feel like this is a good median proposal. It'll provide nice nine stalls, and it won't take away from the open spaces in the parks that are utilized now.
Have we thought about maybe making 26th Avenue side diagonal parking?
No, we have not thought about that. It's parallel now, but we have not talked about diagonal. And I don't know that there's really enough room there to do diagonal, unless you're talking about expanding right along the road there. We did not talk about that. We talked about getting it completely off of 26th.
I didn't know, if anybody ran the math, would we get more parking that way or not?
Rick, do you want to add anything? Sure.
Rick Bogus, City Engineer. We did internally, I don't know if we had talked about it in some of the meetings that we have, but we talked about internally. That's an arterial roadway, and we typically don't do those on arterial roadway because of the backing out and things of that nature. It's also, as you get closer to the stop sign down there, there's no, you know, parking today. It becomes a three-lane section as you get down to 29th. And so with that, plus the added safety of having a parking lot inside where you can pull in, and then you can back up, do anything outside of the 26th Avenue, we thought this was safer and better. But also, the parking lot could be expanded in the future. We thought we could start out with nine. You could always expand it later on if need be.
You make the cut to get off the street into the parking lot. You could always add an additional set of stalls if it showed that that was necessary. Obviously, that's not as cheap as if you did it today, but if it's not needed, then it's a better decision at the time, so.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
What about along the street where they've put up no parking signs?
There's some restrictions there because of the fence that goes around where the lift station is and things like that. And there are also some trees that are really close on that side. So it is off the arterial over there. We also didn't want to get too far to the west down where the open field is. That creates a little problem with playing ball and things like that.
Thanks, Rick.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13G, Comments from the mayor and city council members. In compliance with the Open Meetings Act, no discussion can be held on this item.
Any comments from council members?
Yes, sir.
Just pertaining to this, I really appreciate the staff. They got out there quickly and marked those no parking zones for that splash pad, and then to come up with a parking lot solution. I think we do commend them for reacting quickly to a situation that the neighbors saw was a problem, and we appreciate them doing that in a timely fashion.
Any other comments? Yes, sir. But this, I guess I have to, Bill, I have to look to the city attorney and ask if an agenda- it's not an agenda item, and I-
Just a comment.
You know, but it's set up for comments from the mayor and council members. That's why I-
Okay, is there a time for me? You said before I could speak if I-
Well, if you're on the agenda, and I mean, that's just the way the system sets itself up.
Well, I'm sorry. I understood you to say that.
I did-
Something I wanted to say.
I did say that if you want to address the council, please come forward, but that was a reference to being a part of an agenda item. We have to have you on the agenda to be able to get in front and be part of the program on a given evening. Is that not correct, Neil?
That's correct. This topic is for the mayor and city council members for just generalized comments, not for coordinated debate or anything like that. We have to provide notice and the session of agenda items as well.
So if Bill wanted to get in, on next council meeting, which would be the 17th, I think Chief just gave you a form that we do ask people to fill out, and it then just becomes an agenda item, and then it is part of the welcome. And I'll make notes so next time when I welcome people that I say, "You're part of the agenda item." I want you to come forward. Apologize for that, Bill.
You misunderstood. You said if I needed to say something, I could.
All right.
I have, do you have one quick comment?
We'll be starting school this month, or soon, or whenever, we hope soon. And just a reminder, the whole issue with masks and how things are working in our schools, it's, I know it's really frustrating for parents, but it's just as frustrating for school personnel, for administrators, and school boards. They're making decisions the best that they can for the clientele. For a majority of the clientele, they're just doing the best they can. So I know that there are people who raise questions, or they don't like the way decisions are made, but we just ask that you be patient with us. We're walking, all of the teachers in all of our schools are walking into uncharted territory, and we're just doing the best that we can for our kids. So if you have concerns or questions, be sure that you take it to your administrators. The teachers didn't make those decisions, so that's all.
All right. Seeing nothing else, we will move on to resolutions.
Item 14A, Resolution Number R20-7A, adopting the street signs standard installation and maintenance policy.
Mr. Mayor, I move that Resolution Number R20-78 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution R20-78. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 14B, Resolution Number R20-79, approving an agreement with Bella Fuel Sire and Associates Incorporated, BSNA, in the amount of $65,475 for software license and service agreement.
Mr. Mayor, I move that Resolution Number R20-79 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution R20-79. Any discussion?
Could we just have a brief explanation for the-
This is for the online permit and application software program that we have discussed relative to the senior office associate upstairs.
Yeah, I guess I was thinking more for the citizens.
Yep.
Where this increase came from, but.
Okay, any other discussion?
I have to apologize. I was looking at the wrong.
No, that's okay.
It's the next one.
Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to ordinances on the first reading.
Item 15A, Ordinance Number 20-14, amending section 111.01 of chapter 111 of title 10, 9, no, 11, of ordinance number 05-47, Columbus City Code, to increase the occupation tax rate on telephone companies from 3% to 5%. No motion is needed as this is the first reading, and Beth, if this is what you're wanting an explanation on. Yes. For over a year, the city, our attorney, and stat, and other council that we've hired, we have been dealing with a new law that the state legislature here in Nebraska adopted, and that is related to small wireless facilities in the right-of-way. And basically, the legislature said that we cannot really manage small cell in the right-of-way like we manage everything else that's on city property in city right-of-way. They're just allowed to do whatever they want with very limited control from the city. So the only way we could have any kind of control over aesthetics, placement, all those things relative to small wireless facilities in the right-of-way is if we amended our wireless telecommunications siting ordinance to provide strictly for small cell in the right-of-way, and also to adopt a right-of-way management, right-of-way occupancy, rules and regulations as well. So now we have to implement all these new rules and regs related to the right-of-way for all users of the right-of-way because of this new law in the books. And we also cannot charge any of these telecommunications companies an application fee because of the law and how they wrote it. So the only way the city's going to be able to cover our costs to implement this new mandate, state-mandated system, is to raise this occupation tax. There's no other revenue source for us, and we will have significantly increased costs. Unfortunately.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second? No, we have no motion. We don't have anything to do with this.
Just a frustrating. It's okay. Item 15B, Ordinance Number 20-15, amending ordinance 19-44 that established the pay plan for all classifications within the city by adding the job tile senior office associate to and pay grade B10.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the rules be suspended and ordinance number 20-15 be read by number only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and read ordinance number 2-20-15 by number only. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Ordinance Number 20-15.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of ordinance number 20-15.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 20-15. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 15C, Ordinance Number 20-16, vacating the alley between 25th and 26th Avenues and 22nd and 23rd Streets, Block 16, Phillips Third Edition, and Block 8, Percival Second Edition, Purcell.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the rules be suspended and ordinance number 20-16 be read by number only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and read ordinance number 20-16 by number only. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
Ordinance Number 20-16. Oops, sorry.
Oops, sorry. I didn't see it.
Ordinance Number 20-16.
I move ordinance number 0, gosh, -16 be adopted.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 20-16. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Thank you all. It's been a good evening.